Okay, um, go ahead. Uh, yeah, Jen just gave us a new business plan that he prepared for us. Want to go ahead?
Oh, sure.
Judge, how are you? Want me to say something?
Um, you can. Come on up if you want. Folks are all welcome to come up. We're in committee the whole year, so I mean it's all formal. Come on up. We'll get the, I'll get a couple more here.
Whoever. Everybody come on up.
These are all interested parties here.
Yep.
Let's place another one in here.
Terry was coming.
Well, Terry, we always make him sit in the back.
Finally, we have some leverage on him.
There we go.
Much better.
Okay, as a sort of a brief review, probably two board meetings ago for Northland Counseling Center's board, we brought up the situation for the community's Pine View facility and how, as Northland, how we continue to improve upon it, which I believe we have for services, with the idea that right now we're behind the eight ball, so it's been by about $100,000 in the hole that we've invested in over the last year and three months. And Wade had suggested that it's possible that we would look to the county board to see if there was any ability for you guys to put some skin in the game and help us out to get to a new facility. The present facility at Pine View, we toured about three weeks ago, I believe it was, several of us went down there, walked through it, and I think the general consensus was that those that were able to make it was the same as what I had mentioned. It was, it is not a place that you should be for 30 days inpatient services for CD. And with the transition of St. Francis, and not knowing exactly what they're going to do with that site, if it's going to be four to seven years or whatever, we need to make a move now in order to facilitate quality care for people being treated for dual diagnosis, mental health and CD, or straight CD. And as this facility came up, the one that the Archdiocese loans that we looked at, it fits very well with what we can possibly do and improve upon, continue to improve upon, the services that we offer both in the mental health and the CD areas. So a couple of weeks ago, it was brought up that maybe the county could look at purchasing it and leasing it back to us for several years in order for us to sort of get over this, to get things going. That was left on the table. Last proposal, I think some discussion was for Northland to purchase it in the county to pay the mortgage for a period of time. So that's kind of what we're here for. I think that it's important to review that the budget right now for Northern Pine View is about $462,000 a year, okay? Of that, a little over 220 is for salaries for 10 staff. And then there's another 20,000, 25,000 for health insurance for those staff. And the dollars that come in in that 461 is consolidated funds for the most part, but some of it's private insurance. We built private insurance if they have private insurance, and many private insurances will cover a 30-day program. But it's not direct county dollars. This is coming from the state. So if, if we weren't able to provide that service here, the services would go out and have been going out to a large extent to St. Cloud or Alexandria, as I understand it, due to some circumstances that Pine View did not have the quality of care that some of the local referral sources wanted, nor some of the other counties in the catchment area would like to have had. We have improved upon that. We have gotten those referral patterns opened up, and that's, that's pretty much where we're at with the idea that if we could get the county to partner with us somehow and support the move into the new facility, it would greatly enhance the ability for us to serve this population. Longer term, longer term meaning a year or two, there could be an additional two to four positions that we would be looking to add to that, that staff.
Commissioner Pavlak.
For the record, I can't vote on this because I'm obviously a county board member and I'm a member of the Northland Counseling Board for many years. But I am acting as the intermediate, bringing information, I've done the purchase agreement, et cetera, for full disclosure, and I won't be able to vote at this at the Northland Board either.
You're their chairman, aren't you?
Yeah, I've been the chairman for a while.
All right.
So I, so I can, I know where both sides are financially. You know, Mr. Walker brought up a very good point, and I'm speaking now as a chairman of Northland. If we're going to, when we weren't able to do the purchase and leaseback option, which I always liked because of, you know, I like that because the county taxpayers were held harmless. They, they owned the building, which thanks to the Catholic Church, Father Ben and the parishioners, they gave us a huge reduction on it and a greater contribution of this because, like the judge, they know the value that this facility brings to the community. We need it. I can guarantee you, the judge can certainly talk to that. But moreover, because we're, well, we went over our reserve things this morning, and Teresa who came back for a day and worked with Jenny on this wasn't real comfortable with that. She felt that we'd be better even if we did a grant. And so that's when we switched gears and looked at the county providing funding over a period of years. Four years is generally what the county does because you're not encumbering future boards. Doesn't mean in four years if something's wrong, someone can't come back to the board. I don't think Greg and I will probably be here in those days, but you never know. So to that end, we made the purchase agreement. That expired because, you know, and the government works slow, and we had to get everybody the information, et cetera, and come to some decisions on what direction we go. In the meantime, because the purchase agreement expired, the church and the realtor were willing to make, make an extension. And I signed that. I think we're now at June 15th is everything. So timing becomes problematic in two ways. You know, we don't want to extend that again. As, as we wait and not knowing where the board is at, it's costing Northland money. And if Northland is now going to purchase it, and we're going to, we're going to help out with some payments or over a period of time, et cetera, Northland still has a, has the issue of putting a down payment down on a loan that large, and that's, that's going to be $60,000 to $65,000, I'm assuming. I don't know exactly what, 20% of 490 is off the top of my head, or 290, I mean, off the top of my head, but generally that's what lending institutions are going to require. So no matter what we do here, Northland is still facing some headwinds. They, as a Northland, as the chairman of Northland, we're, we're taking a chance here too, trying to make sure this community has these services. Greg and the staff are confident, they think they can make this work, but they're going to need some help, at least in those initial years, to provide, to provide that service. And again, I, you know, speaking, and now as a county commissioner, I don't have to tell you, we need that service in this community. There's no question about it. So it's how do we do it?
Commissioner, and myself, and the judge, and Greg, and Jen, and I think a few other people, I think Kathy, you were there, we met in management committee on Friday, and we've met for quite a while, and a lot of discussions. And you realize already through St. Thomas and with Father Ben, they've already discounted many thousands of dollars on, on the property. Just talking with the sheriff alone, the sheriff figured anywhere $40,000 to $50,000 a year savings in, in transportation by having the facility here rather than running to, where all do we go, Kathy? I mean, we go all over the state. I mean, so I mean, right, right there, just advantage to the county of that savings, the treatment here locally within the county for our residents, rather than sending them away from their family in these trying times that they're going through a lot. It's better for them to be here. And I know for the judge, it makes it a lot easier for you to make the decisions.
Yeah. The, the issue from my perspective, I don't know anything about money. Ask my wife. But the fact is that what I do know a little bit about is, collaterally, I know a little bit about the need for treatment, quality treatment, in some cases, long-term treatment. And that's what these folks are talking about. And it's, it's, I think the issue here isn't whether, you know, we maintain a facility in Little Fork. The issue is whether we maintain a facility, period. Because I get the impression that Little Fork just isn't able to meet, there's too much uncertainty. And from a need perspective, you all understand burgeoning problems that we deal with, chemical dependency and how it spins over into the court system, not just from a criminal standpoint, but also from a civil perspective, commitments and so forth. Transportation is massive when the main transporting officer from up here, just where they're at, have to go elsewhere. And, you know, I, I'm attracted to the idea, not just, you know, I mean, it clearly benefits the bulk of the population of the county, but the point is that it also benefits the entire county. The outlying areas are mostly under service. And to be able to move it here and increase the number of beds, at least in whole, and then make it an institution here. And then to say nothing of the fact that, you know, if there are shortages, that doesn't prevent the agency from accepting old county people. I can't see anything but a blessing that this was actually proposed. Is it something that, from my perspective and the judiciary, you've been hoping and asking for, for years and years? And, you know, we would have the blessing, not only that of a great outpatient program, but a great inpatient program, a facility that's tolerable, livable, where people can actually learn the concepts of treatment. The follow-through afterwards is much closer here than it will be, when I talk about follow-through, the necessity of continuing aftercare in the sense of recovery programming like NA or AA or what the other names are, it's much more accessible to get into it and continue with it if it's available and available. So I, you know, judges aren't, we're not called upon to get involved with profit-making activities, and that's not what I'm trying to do here. I'm talking about a need, to answer a huge need for the community, to help out the community, basically. And I'm saying the community, meaning district county. I think it's an economic decision, but like I said, I don't know much about that. I mean, it could be an economic plus, and I think it would be. And the Pine View closes down at Little Fork, which won't fall back, wouldn't be any problem. In terms of expense, that much I can tell you. But also in terms of what I'm interested in, which is the provision of services to those that really deserve it and need it. And as you know, I mean, I don't want to piss the drug court thing, but the mentality of sobriety is where it's at. I mean, we talked about the same thing with drug court, about how we have, you know, the ability to essentially hopefully reform people. And it doesn't always work the first and the second time. But ultimately, when people are compelled to stick with it, it works. And then what that does is it increases the tax base, it increases the reduction in public costs for families. It's, it spins out all the way down. It's just a great deal. And one other thing, Northland, as you know, is also focused largely, I think largely, on straight mental health issues. Well, over the years, and Kathy, because we're members too, when we started off with our drug court, we've been a quandary, trying to figure out how we're going to deal with persons that come into the system that have co-occurring mental illness disorders along with chemical dependency. And we weren't equipped to do it. At the time, there weren't a whole lot of CD, MI, or medical mental illness, chemical dependency programs, even in the state. It's evolving now, but they're done here. And when they started doing that down there, just the local mental health facility, again, it was just another godsend. I mean, I think it's just, I can't see any downside to it. I think it's the greatest opportunity that I've seen since I got on the bench in terms of the provision of this kind of service.
Commissioner Pavlak.
Sorry, I'm just throwing this out there, but I think, I think the issue for the committee here is a direction, where we're going, what we're willing to do. You know, if the county's behind us, maybe it's possible to work with a bank and Northland not having to put down that amount of money for a down payment. On the other hand, whether they do or not, that's going to be Northland's issue. For us, it's a determination how much money everyone may contribute. And I know Jenny had run some numbers, but looking at, if we're doing it at a four-year period, whether, if there's no initial down payment, the payment would be, what, 20?
Seventeen forty-five.
Seventeen forty-five. I ran that this morning. So that's with a-
A month.
That's what, 20% down?
Zero down.
Zero down.
Right.
So looking at, you know, I don't know what the numbers are for the board, and I'm going to leave that up to you guys. But now I'm speaking as Northland, I mean, I think we would at least, at least need that payment for the, for the initial years to get this up and running, because at the end of the day, Northland's still picking up the bulk of the cost if we can make it successful. And, you know, I can only tell you this, I mean, I've been on that Northland Board since I started 25 years ago, and Teresa said it best. She said, anyone can do this and make it successful. It's Greg Walker, and I can back that up 100%. I've got, I can, I've got reams of examples that we've done over the years, and so I have all the faith in the world that this will work. The issue on transportation and, and, you know, to the court's point that Brian brought up, law enforcement, that's going to more than cover our costs, in my opinion. So that's just how I look at it. But for Northland to move forward, they, we've got to make some decisions, and I have the, the diocese waiting and the realtor, and I think what everyone's looking for is some direction from this board so that we can bring it to the full board for-
Can I just say one more thing? You know, I hate to talk, but it's a joke. But, but, you know, I come here with my half, my half periodically for my drug court, our drug course, and we talk about need. And I've also told you guys that, you know, there's a very strong component of a local, a local need, all the probably will be. But in a perfect world, the cost of drug court should be shifted to the state in its entirety. And I've said that before, and I say it again, and our corporations should be involved, and the partnership of the services should be involved, should be a joint effort. They're going to coordinate it, and all is coordinated, block stock and rail legislation should dive into this thing. All right. Having said that, from a county perspective, this program is about as well as you can get. There's no shrouding oversight agency where you folks get funding. I mean, you provide a service. And I hate to even go here, but I'm going to say that if it became a choice, I don't have my staff here, if it became a choice between drug court and this, honestly, I think this would be as beneficial, if not more. And my only urge is that I would urge you guys to, whatever it takes. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, I know what the issues might be here, but I'm saying, you know, let this go on, whatever it takes, I just do it. If you have to underfund the drug court, why? You know, that's, that's the strong thing I feel about.
The community really needs those things.
Yeah, we do, absolutely. I mean, they go hand in hand, and this is a day and age where expenses keep going up. But like I say, I think our lobbying efforts in terms of the drug court is so political that it needs to be at the state level, and that's, you know, we're at such a transition right now for that tone before, so.
Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
I don't have anything additional to add, really, except that I think that it is, it would be a cost savings to the county in a lot of different ways. I mean, we talk about the transportation for mental health clients, but we also have transportation issues with families and people in treatment and kids visiting families, and all of that too. That would certainly be a lot better if it was in town here. And I have talked to some of the surrounding counties that have used Pine View in the past, and told them about the changes and the possible move of the facility to the Falls, and everybody, all the other directors were very excited about it and thought that that would be beneficial to them as well, because they felt that Pine View being in International Falls would have a more connection to the community, there's more opportunities for people to get involved in therapy, meetings, you know, a support system, and that that would be a very positive thing to happen for people.
I think services are directed toward, let's face it, I mean, they're directed toward population centers. So we see Bemidji, and we see Duluth, and we see Virginia, and so forth. And a lot of our stuff goes out of the area, okay? Right now, it's Little Fork, okay? In terms of straight cost, you know, for certain places elsewhere in the county, the dollar cost for families to come up and use the people, move toward maybe closer, actually from a mileage perspective, closer. But by the same token, people are always looking for a reason to make a trip. And if they can, if they can knock off two or three birds of one stone to come to a center like the Falls from outlying areas, I'm not trying to minimize Little Fork at all, but the point is, if you had to go shopping and you had to knock off a couple of trips, and your choice was Little Fork or here, I mean, the answer's fairly obvious.
Yeah. Commissioner.
We have to make a decision soon, or Father Ben's going to be out in the cold there. Are we going to take care of him?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the move, the issue for Northland was looking for a five-year thing, and if, I just throw this out as a possible option for the board, if we're going to go four years, then why not round it off to an even $2,000, which would add money for the final year? And, and in four years, we can see where things are at. But that's, it's a round number. I know Jenny and Teresa felt that that was doable, and we're not purchasing, we're, you know, but we're spreading our cost out over, you know, a period of four years. So it's, it's just another option that's there, but I think from Northland's perspective, trying to get, you know, Greg's making, you know, if he accepts that, either he's making some concessions too on what Northland.
We'd probably be saving more than $2,000 a month just at mileage.
It will pay for itself. I assure you, that's why I have no problem if four years from now, we see how things are going, maybe Northland has to come back. This gets a program going, and we're getting a facility that is once, literally, a lifetime opportunity for a program like this. It just fell into our lap, but Father Ben says someone else has something to do with these things.
I don't think with Father Ben it just fell. I think there was some work behind this, wasn't there? Talking to your higher up?
Yeah. Oh, what else? I just see it was-
So we said?
All right, yes. My joke last time, Pope Francis, if he knocked on the door, he'd tell me to get out of there because you don't need that house, there's one priest now, where it used to be four. But I also would say that, that church is actually owned by the St. Thomas Aquinas Church, not the diocese, just so you know. So that's, we're looking at our parishioners too, because it's not my house either, it's their house. And so this is a process with them too. We're ready to, we can, yeah, this place can be used a lot better in something in our community, and then this can even, for my side and our side, we're excited too, because this helps a lot of people on every side.
Commissioner.
I'm going to get upstairs if you guys don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Thank you. Take care, Father. Everybody, take care.
Good to see you.
I'm not going to go run the room and shake hands. I'm not running for office.
So if we're going to have a $24,000 a year, with Northland still have to secure a loan, and you need, you need to, we're sort of speaking, making the payments, but you have to secure a loan, is that correct? And come up with a down payment and all those things. So you need to kind of get on with this, unless you've done some of this already.
Just over the phone with the bank, getting rough, you know, what the interest rate would be, that it's five and a quarter today for five years. That's with 20% down. I don't know what it changes if we don't put anything down. 20% would be roughly $60,000 ballpark with closing costs and what have you.
I think we need to get on with this.
Speaking for both sides, I agree, I mean, for, for both parties.
Then at the end of, so it's $24,000 here for four years, is that all we're talking about?
Yep, it would be added to our budget.
Commissioner.
Right. So Greg, would you, looking at a down payment, or would you prefer no down payment and, and what we've talked about, the $2,000 left or whatever? What would be most advantageous for Northland, you know, and then the county, can we can think about what's, you know, what we can do then? I mean, I realize you need to go to your board with any kind of a pulse of-
Yeah, would, if we could extrapolate out the 2,000, what's the 2,000 over four years?
Forty-eight.
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand a year, forty-eight, ninety-six thousand.
Ninety-six hundred thousand somewhere near that.
Hundred thousand. That would put us, if we could get that as a down payment, and then only have $200,000 payment financed, bottom line, the rest, and be done with it, that would be very workable.
Cleaner.
Yeah.
But can a budget for-
That was the challenge, to pull that out of budget.
It's, you know, we've got some money right now in contingency. $24,000 would be still a little bit of a challenge to pull from contingency, but we'd be able to do that. But to pull out the $100,000 or 98 from our, we'd have to reopen the budget and probably go from reserves because we don't have that in contingency.
One thing we know for sure, other things are going to come up, we've got a lot of year left here.
Yes, we do. It's very early in the year.
Yeah, we're only in the 1/3rd.
And we've got some unknowns going on right now, too. We've got the Isle of Bousour project, but, you know, that is unknown right now, and some other things, too.
But we're spending the $24,000 anyway.
That's, hey, you know, we talked about adding to the budget, but if we're not adding this, we're going to be adding transports for sure, and probably some other costs that go, that go with it, because depending on the patient, it's not always just a single driver.
That's why I said we'd be saving probably $2,000 at least, just in transports, you know. We did 80,000 miles last year, so.
Is there any way this could be KDA money?
We looked at that, there are some problems with that because economic development side of it, but this is what we're doing here, the county can only fund, you know, community service, so to speak. So not, not saying it's impossible, but we'd have to have, actually, Joe Boyle's the one who brought that up, we'd have to have him look at that as everything. He just had some concerns about doing economic developments. Either it's a county need or it's not, first and foremost.
Can the facility be used for detox in all the way it is, or does something has to happen alter?
Based on what we know, and detox is one of those things where at the state right now, they're looking at even changing it to where the county, which would be good for the counties, I think overall beneficial, it should be more than acute care medical situation. And the state's looking at having MA picking that up, whether that gets passed or not, I don't know. If they do, I don't, I don't know, because they're, in detox, like in so many things, there's acute detox and there's subacute detox. And you take your standard person coming in that needs to be stabilized, that would be regular detox. You take somebody in that's got diabetes, kidney failure, and things like that, that's acute, a higher level of detox.
There's a medical condition associated with it.
Yes. And we would like to look at being able to do that at some point if that state takes it over for a payments, as opposed to the county having to pay for. The primary requirement for the differences in even doing detox is staffing. So you would need an RN, at least one on, to just do detox, which is why at Pine View, when we took it over, we were averaging, I think, if I remember, like maybe Kathy, you know, off Dr. Ed, but I think we were getting like two nights a week, just about two nights a month, is all we were getting for detox services out there, and we were having to keep an RN on to do that and stuff. So it's one of those things, the utilization has to be there to justify it, because you have to have those, the higher, I think you have to have a RN on call also, which would have to be somebody to be on call.
Were you only doing two nights a month on that because most of them were being transported out?
Either out or to the hospital, it's the only way.
Okay.
Well-
I'm just asking, as Northland, what, what- I'm just asking, that is, Northland, what, for the board, what's make or break?
Well, from Northland, I mean, obviously, it would help, as Greg pointed out, to have the money upfront, because that reduces the mortgage, I mean, there's no question about that saves you a lot of money over time.
Does it interest?
We've got to deal, deal with the county is able to put out there. You know, I don't know, I'm just thinking in my own head, if we, if Jenny is able to procure the $24,000 now, then it's another $24,000 in seven months, January 1st, because that's our new budget, but, you know, if we could dig from research or KDA or find another way to put more money upfront, is that an option? I don't know. I think, I think, you know, I think really, it may take some more thought or discussion by the board, I think, but is there a commitment for that, you know, amount of money here, however we do it, but, yeah, speaking as the chairman of Northland, if we could get the money upfront, it would help us tremendously.
We need to go one way or another, because Greg needs to know, and St. Thomas needs to know, because, I mean, I'm sure if we're not going to move on this, you've got to put them back on the market, and we can't sit here for two months without discussing how we're going to pay for this.
And what we're coming up against real fast here with this beautiful, nice weather, which we all like, however, out there at Pineview, it is miserable, and we've got air conditioners that need to be fixed, and they're not cheap little windows there to the hours, and I really don't want to carry people over the hockey with summer.
And I want to thank Commissioner Norby for going out there and turing it, because then you can see why we're not in a position to put more money into that facility, I mean, we're, Northland is at the end, we, we're either, we either get moved forward to something or we're going to have to discon-
To me, it looked really apparent that they didn't want you there. I mean, that's what it looked like to me, just awful place.
Yeah.
So essentially, you guys are doing, you're securing all the financing in the $24,000 you're thinking, oh, the county is really subsidizing you, we're not, we're not making payments at a bank or anything like that, we're just subsidizing you.
What kind of loan is this?
It would be, the only place we've really checked so far is Bremer, which normally they're very competitive, they are a nonprofit bank, for those of you that don't know, and they're very big, in fact, you know, we're, we're hoping to get a couple or at least one small grant from them to help do, do this if it goes through, but it's, it's a five-year commitment, but before it changes, the interest rate can change, and I think we all know interest rates are still pretty low historically, so at the end of five years, they could go up, and they will go up if interest rates have gone up.
So they're promoting variable rate mortgages, like we just said?
Yeah, on, on commercial loans.
Oh, on commercial?
On commercial loans.
Okay, that was my question, now this is a commercial one?
Yeah, that's all we can get as an organization.
Okay, because my son was looking at home loans, and they were still telling him fours.
Right, and that's why it's at five and a quarter also.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
Commissioner. Commissioner McBride's point, I guess I would have to ask Jenny, would this help, I'm looking for something that would help both parties, would it help Northland, could the county do this, do 50 now, and then 50 for next year in seven months, so we're putting it, spreading it into two budgets instead of four, and would that, would that help Northland? I guess that's the question, is, I'm trying to look for something in the middle here that would help both parties.
I guess my recommendation would be to, I would go back to Bremer, or I would go back and look at another bank. Bremer is going to sell that on the secondary market, and so they have to find, they have to meet those conditions. If you go with another local bank that might not have to sell that on the secondary market, then there's a lot more flexibility in terms of down payment, and particularly if they know that the county is going to support some funding for mortgage payments, I think that it may be a little bit easier, and I think it's worth checking on, so that you might not need to have quite so much down. I guess I'd look for a little bit more alternatives, because if we're looking at funding $100,000 within the next 12 months or less than 12 months, at that point, maybe we would be better off.
Be eighteen months.
Eight, well, if we do now and again in January, it's less than 12 months.
But it takes care of an eighteen-month period.
It would take care of an eighteen-month period, you know, I, I think it's something that we'd like to think about, because at that point, we might almost be better, you know, the first option of, you know, we're exploring that again, we're looking at that again, so then we get full payback, and there's no, no county dollars being spent at the end of four or five years, you know, it just depends, I think.
I'm just thinking in my own mind, if I were doing this individually, I'm looking to get rid of the payments in two, if we can do it in two payments, come January 1st, or whenever we do our budget, first week of January and second week of January, we're done, but we have to come up with more money, and I guess that's the balance, Jenny's got to do.
What do you think we can do today to give some satisfaction to her? I mean, we're all in favor of this, it's, we're, you know, some details, so can we actually do something here to hold this forward, so everybody feels a little better about the, I think, year?
We could have a clearer answer in, in a couple of weeks when we meet again.
I would hope so, maybe we could do a little bit more research on different terms with other options, I know that it's just a suggestion.
We could, but I, and I agree with your point, that was a good point in the sense of, you know, part of it's going to be, you know, what kind of commitment do we have?
Right.
And we don't have a commitment. They're not going to, you know, I can go in there and say, well, the county might do this or might do that, but they're ultimately still going to say, well, until closing or till we have something in writing or, you know, a contract for whatever you're going to do.
You know, I kind of think, well, there's no, I kind of think we can, we should make a motion to-
We can't, we can't, we can't.
I kept trying to do that, too.
That's what you were tweeting. But I think we can provide, say that we're going to provide $100,000, was affordable, depending whether it's four years or two years, or, does that keep it doing anything for you? Can we, do we have to do a write a letter or something?
Commissioner Padlock. Well, I think to that, again, looking for the, for direction from the board, but I, I'm telling you, we've got to get this wrapped up, and we're not meeting again until the 20th.
Third.
Third. We need a, we need a decision prior, you know, we need to know we're going prior to that, so does Northland. We're meeting tomorrow with the Northland board, we really need, we need something to tell them here, so that they continue.
I think if we're going to do that, we maybe might have to have a special, might have to meet next week.
Yeah, we can have a special meeting, not just one issue.
Yeah. That would be very helpful.
Me, I mean, because, I mean, we really can't make a decision here today, or, I mean, or we can't give a decision.
But Greg, could we do what Jen said, just look at a couple of different, the other institutions?
Oh, we can make some calls.
And we have a special meeting next week, we will have a firm answer yes or no in what their funding is going to be.
Yeah, I can make a few calls. Yeah, if you, Greg and Jenny could work together, and, you know.
She's involved.
What I'm getting here from the board, it sounds like there's not enough support to move this forward, now it's just a matter of how to put it together.
We need to make this happen.
Yes, good, but I mean, that's going to, that's helpful for, for me tomorrow, I know it will be for Greg, that's-
So if the board should-
Jenny, you know, Jenny can come up with something for us, you know, she could let me know, and I could-
You can schedule a meeting?
Schedule a meeting.
Just one, one issue?
Yeah. It's just for them.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
When is the purchase agreement expire, now?
15th of June.
Fifteenth, okay.
But then, you know, we still, even once a decision's made, we've got the finance they put in, all their closings, et cetera. In the meantime, I believe Father Ben, you have an option on another property, right?
It's hard.
You know, Father Ben told me that the Pope said, what, we all have to live in poverty, or start living more, you know, simpler. Yeah, so that was the word, yeah.
He didn't mean attempt, though.
I might, but that's fine. He didn't mean no taxes or anything either.
Well, let me tell you, Father Ben loves a very, you know, that low lifestyle, but the facility-
What is your time zone for the perfect, you have a place in mind?
Yeah.
Is that flexible?
Yeah, we did the same, yeah, our date, closing date, same time as this one. And for me, I've always said, for our church side, I've always believed that God will give us what we need and what, and then versus what we want, and this is one of those things our community needs, and so I've always, yeah, he'll, he'll give all of us what we need, especially those that are sick and those with addictions and mental illness, and that's, that's why he gave us his son, and so in my mind, I've never really thought about this is the date, this is, well, whatever, and so this backed up a little bit, for us that's fine, and he'll, he'll, he always does what I've experienced as a priest and as a church, and what we can do as a community, so I'm not really worried about any of those, it's, it's more that you guys that do the great jobs, that is the healing part, you know, I'm definitely praying, pretty excited for everybody in the community.
Let me tell you, no matter what happens here, I was blessed to meet Father Ben, and working with him, what a, you know, what a wonderful experience, and the Catholic Church, I mean, they were, they were so gracious to lower that price, and leave furnishings or whatever, you know, Father Ben, I mean, I can't say enough about their generosity, it was, we wouldn't be sitting here talking had they not been willing or able to.
Well, as it worked out today, we were looking at it, and, I mean, a lot of times you don't even see the person that's looking at it, Father Ben just happened to pull in while we were talking, and had already due the property, and standing in the parking lot, talking, and it's nice to be able to meet the owner, actually, because many real estate acquisitions, you don't meet the person until the closing.
So here, and I've said it before, in my mind, the church has already donated at least $50,000, but just like, yeah, just hope the county can, if we can match that and then continue with the rest of the payments or something here to get this going, that's up, that'll be up to you folks.
We'll have an answer next, I'll say.
Well, before that, we'll-
And then you guys have to work together a bit, see if we can get something better.
Hopefully, hopefully we have a proposal nailed down by the end of the week, or at least Monday, because Jenny needs to get that information out to us, so we need to know what we're, what's on the table when we come in, and so does Northland.
Thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
You need to have an answer next week, too.